Good evening, folks. Welcome. This is the Red Hook Town Board meeting of March 10th, 2020. Would you be kind enough to join me in the pledge of allegiance, please? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much, Danielle. I have on the screen the agenda items for this evening. We have just a few agenda items and we'll be jumping around a little bit, probably starting with agenda item number five, which is the draft HIMI Shared Services, and then moving back towards number one. We expect to have a fairly short meeting this evening. We've got a few formalities that we need to address tonight. All right. Have you panned over to the screen? Folks can see what's... Okay, very good. Thank you very much, Danielle. All right, it's the first meeting of the month, which means that we have a supervisor's report. It's a monthly report of the financial condition of the town at any given moment. In this case, it is the period ending February 29th of 2020. And for the folks at home, let's see if we can blow this up a little bit for you to see. Danielle, if you'd be kind enough to pan to the screen. Okay, very good. So we started out the month of February with an opening balance of $6,223,626, receipts of $5.8 million and change, dispersance of $3.8 million and change, for an ending balance of $8.277 and $344. And so you'll notice that the numbers are quite large. That's, of course, because we received the majority, overwhelming majority, of our local tax revenue during the course of the month of February. And so you'll see that balance go down as the year progresses. So you have in your packet not only the supervisor's report, and there were no, you know, exciting items this month. You have our community preservation fund balance, which you will notice went down for the first time, and that's because we're happy to report that there was a closing of all the lands from essentially Aspen Wall over to 9G. In partnership with Winnicke Land Trust, we appropriated some community preservation funds for public access. And so we continue to work on our Rec Park West project, which ultimately, over the course of the next few years, will have a trail built through and will be a significant portion of the Village-to-Village Trail. So again, that closing. And so we have a balance of $1.357 million. We also just received another check for a little over $10,000 coming in from the county clerk's office. We have a couple of minor budget adjustments, and as always, you have your various reports for the month of February. And again, nothing particularly unusual or unexpected in either of those reports. All right, the few budget adjustments are we reestablish each year any unspent grant dollars, and so you'll see that's where most of the budget adjustments are. All right, if there are no questions about the reports, is there a motion to accept the supervisor's report? Okay.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and a motion to accept the budget adjustments?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Okay, very good. We also have a clerk's report. Claire?
The town's report for the period of February 1st to February 29th, 2020. Total local shares remitted to the supervisor, $1,927. Amount paid to New York State Ag and Markets, $31. Amount paid to New York State Department of Health for Marriage Licenses, $45. Amount paid to New York State Environmental Conservation, $56.68. Total state, county, and local revenues of $2,032.95. Pursuant to Section 27 Sub 1 of the town law, Suma Khan certifies the foregoing as a full and true statement of all fees and monies received by her during the period stated above in connection with her office, accepting only such fees and monies, the application of which are otherwise provided for by law.
Okay, very good. Thank you very much, Claire. Is there a motion to accept the clerk's report?
So moved.
Okay, second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you very much. Okay, we'll move right on into announcements. And so obviously, the topic that is on everybody's mind throughout TV, social media, and in your community is the coronavirus. And so would like to take this moment to let you know that not only is your local government meeting and having conference calls and preparing for the coronavirus to in fact come to our county and our community, but we are also updating our website so that you can receive notifications, some information that you might find to be helpful. This is a health emergency, and so that's a topic that really is coordinated by the county health department. So we have a link on our website to that health department, the New York State Department of Health, and obviously CDC. We will be updating the site as we receive information that we think may be of importance to you, but we do want to convey a couple things to you. We know this is a very stressful time for most folks. There is some advice that we think is prudent and sound to let folks know. One is that, you know, many communities are at the point where they're now sort of encouraging folks to keep some social distancing between individuals and to reconsider maybe some of those close gatherings that you might otherwise attend. And we will be updating information on the website. This reminds us to remind you that we have a notification feature on our town website. You go to redhook.org, notify me, and you can sign up for alerts on topics that you are interested in. And so that's on the coronavirus. Okay, on happier notes, and hopefully this event will still go on. The Village of Red Hook has their Egg Scramble event, the very popular event that goes on at the Linden Avenue Middle School. It is currently scheduled to occur Saturday, April 4th, at 12:00 noon. That's Linden Avenue. And again, we encourage you to stay up to the minute on our website so you can find out if this event is going to occur. Any other announcements for folks? No? No, no, okay, very good. All right, let's jump right in for public comments. Linda?
It's been five years since the St. Margaret's Committee has met, due to the fact that the chairman died and also one of the other members. I've been saying for perhaps the last six months that I'm willing to rejoin and get that group going. Right away, you said, "Send in a resume." The next day, I had it out to you. I haven't heard anything. Either I'm in or I'm out. Tell me one way or the other.
Okay, Linda, I think I answered this at the last meeting, which is that it's going to take us several months to constitute a St. Margaret's Committee, and at that point, we will notify. Again, I'm not the one, I'm not the point person on the St. Margaret's Committee.
Who's liaison?
Okay, the liaison is Bill O'Neill, and at the time when he has some recommendations for who should be on the committee, put that forth to the board, and then letters will go out to the volunteers to let them know they're on the committee. But it's going to take some time. We thank you for your patience.
I mean, Hannaford gave that building over to the town. They expect that building to be used for something, not staying vacant. It's not good for the community for that building to be vacant. We need to do something immediately, quickly, get that committee going, fast.
Okay, thank you, Linda. Any other public comments? All right, let's jump right in. I think I mentioned we'd skip to, we have our highway superintendent here tonight. We have been doing shared services certainly with our more immediate communities, the Village of Red Hook, Village of Tivoli, and so we need to formalize agreements. That's part of the requirements with shared services and for auditing. And so we have a draft intermunicipal agreement that can be shared with other communities. And before we go ahead and do that, we had our town attorney help put language to that, and I have only one question for you. Do you have any comments, any recommendations, any proposed changes to that draft HIMI?
Seems pretty clear and straightforward.
Okay. So what we're going to do tonight is we're not going to pass the agreement, but we're going to give it our blessing and hand it over to our highway superintendent to share with other municipalities. And then if we need to make any tweaks or changes, we'll go ahead and entertain those and then we'll pass it. But it seems to me, unless I'm mistaken, that we're good with the draft the way it is, and so...
Did Teresa have any comments?
Did you have any comments, any more comments about...
Well, I think this is pretty much the same one we had with Tivoli and Red Hook.
It is, yes. Teresa, let me give you a clean copy for each of the municipalities that you want to send it to, because that way they'll understand what you're doing.
Yes, please.
So if you could just show a hand of the ones that you want to send it to. Okay. And we'll get that ready.
Very good. Okay, thank you very much, Teresa. All right, we are going to jump quickly to our first item. Each year, in April, we take a step in recognizing the month as Parkinson's Awareness Month. I know that we who have been in the community for a while have known members of our community who've been afflicted by this terrible disease, and so we have once again in front of us a proclamation speaking in support of advancing therapies to address this terrible disease. And so any questions? I'm not going to read the proclamation, but I'm assuming that we are just going to pass this, is that right?
So moved?
So moved, okay.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and I want to thank Nancy Redkey, who chairs the support group of the Mid Hudson Valley, who each year does a lot of terrific work and provides us with the information we need. So, all in favor? Aye. All right. Item number two, this is just updating our police contract for the folks at home. As you know, the Village of Red Hook has a police department, and the town of Red Hook contracts with that police department for services. And so it's been a while since we renewed our contract. It automatically renews each year, and so what we decided to do is to, in fact, just update the dates and the language in it. There are essentially no significant changes. We took the number of hours out per week because that is changing. It's changing each year. We're upping the amount of contractual services. And are there any other questions? All right, this is resolution number, Claire?
Eleven.
Eleven. Dated March 10th, 2020, approving the police services agreement between the Village of Red Hook and the town of Red Hook. And I so moved. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Okay, we have two things related to the dog park. One is an intermunicipal agreement. As you know, we've had to update that because we've taken on different roles and responsibilities between the two municipalities for the folks at home. We want to remind you that we have a combined Red Hook and Rhinebeck Dog Park facility for both large and small dogs. It is at the intersection of Stone Church Road and Yance Road. The entrance is off of Yance, and it's a facility that you are welcome to use at any time. And, oh, that doesn't look good, does it, Danielle? Technology, there we go. Thank you. And so ever more important as we do work on our Rec Park facilities, we would encourage you to take advantage of those facilities. So we've just updated a couple items as it relates to intermunicipal agreement. That we can go ahead and pass tonight. We've also updated our local law related to the dog park. That's Chapter 64. And what we can do with that is put that up for a public hearing.
We don't have a resolution for it tonight.
If you'd like to. Otherwise, if you want to just mull it on the 25th, we can set a public hearing. I don't know if you've had a chance to review that.
The law, you want to have the public hearing on the 25th, you're saying?
No, well, we could do that if you have no questions about it. If you'd like to sit with it, we don't have a resolution to call.
That's for the law, the HIMI.
But we can do that. Oh, you're looking for a draft?
Well, we didn't do one because I wasn't...
Yeah.
So I'm also looking at some additional language for this that might address the...
On the law?
The...
Boarding fees.
Boarding fees, right?
Okay.
So we were just looking at that today, so what I'm hoping is that we can bring that back with those changes next week, you know, for the next meeting.
So Bill, maybe you could work with our attorney and let's...
I'll send you a draft of that.
Let's take a look at those boarding fees. We want to make sure we recoup any boarding fees associated with dangerous dogs. Okay, if that's not an expense for the taxpayer. Okay, so for now, we have an amendment to the intermunicipal agreement along with the exhibits, and that just updates our new relationships. And so any further discussion?
Well, principally, what's the main difference? Number six, the amendments?
Yeah.
That Red Hook is going to maintain it and Rhinebeck isn't?
Yeah.
And the second thing is that they're doing away with the permit process.
Right.
So the dogs have to be licensed, but there's not going to be a separate permit anymore.
Is that in this HIMI?
Well, it's gone. The language that used to require it is not there anymore, so that's...
So that's okay, right?
Right, that's what...
So the main thing is the number six, right? The town's been responsible.
Well, that's right. That's the key thing, and then also...
The permit requirements have been moved.
Okay.
All right, if there are no further questions, we have resolution number 12, dated March 10th, 2020. It's a resolution authorizing the execution of an amendment to the intermunicipal agreement with the town of Rhinebeck regarding certain municipal shared services regarding Rhinebeck Dog Park. I think we call it Red Hook, Rhinebeck Dog Park, and this resolution, let's amend that language, shall we? So moved by Deputy Supervisor O'Neill. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you very much. Okay. The next item on the agenda is a resolution to establish a public hearing on a modification to the proposal of consolidated lighting districts. So as you know, we've been working for the last three years on converting our streetlights to LED, and so we essentially did all the necessary steps along the way, except for now that we've chosen to go with the New York Power Authority and they're doing the financing, and we have a couple of, you know, minor changes, but the costs are different now because we are no longer doing a borrowing. We had a bond resolution dated a few years ago now, a couple years ago. And so because it involves lighting districts, you have to have a public hearing related to it, and you have all those materials, this giant binder, as well as some of the summary sheets, which will be available for the public. But suffice it to say, for those of you at home who want just the basics, we'll be converting the streetlights to LEDs. They will be LEDs of sufficient light. They will not be too bright. We've done a great deal of work on the design as well. We will also be adding a handful of lights. If you go out to Route 9 now, you will notice that along the sidewalk, there are no streetlights on the west side of the street between here and, say, Conway. And so we're going to be adding light fixtures there for obvious safety reasons, as we encourage people to use the sidewalks on that side. So what we have tonight in front of us is just a resolution to set the public hearing for the 25th at 7:40, and...
There's two of them. One for 7:35 and one for 7:40.
Right.
Yes.
One for consolidated lighting.
Sorry, one for... Yeah, so we have two lighting districts, one of which is for the, well, we actually have three lighting districts. One is the general, or the general townwide, and then there are lighting districts for subdivisions, of which the users of that district pay for those costs. And then there's a third one, the Bard Lighting District, and they pay for all the costs associated with that and including the conversion. But that has to go through the town for us. We have, we are the ones who established that lighting district. So yes, two public hearings, one for 7:35 and one for 7:40. So that's resolution number 13.
So it's going to be separate, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so so moved.
Second.
And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, and the resolution number 14, which would be for the Bard Lighting District?
So moved.
7:40, okay. Is there a second? I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you very much. Okay, there's a ton of information in that 428-page document, the years in the making. For the folks at home, you should know that the laws have saved us money. The payback period is estimated to be a little over five years, and once again, helping with our finances. Okay. Is there any reorganization that we can do tonight? I know that we've had more letters of interest. I know that there are some people who are attending some meetings of particular boards or committees to see if it's something that they're interested in. Are we ready yet with any additional appointments to reorg? Anyone for your committees or boards? All right, let's see if we can try and get some more done on the 25th. All right, correspondence. A few things for correspondence. First of all, Dutchess County Planning and Development Land Use and Economic Planning Program is designed to assist municipalities in achieving community-identified economic goals. And so they are having their land use... They were talking about grants for streamlining municipal approvals.
Land use and economic planning.
Yeah. And so application and instructions were sent out just last week, and of course, guess when they want the grants back in, if we're interested, in March 16th, 2020. So give this some thought. If we'd like to do this, you would need to call a special meeting to authorize a grant application. Here we are on the 10th. It's, what a tight...
Yeah, it's a really tight term.
Really, really tight. Not quite sure why they... Yeah, maximum's $27,000, yeah. Okay. Pace University. So yeah, let's try and coordinate ourselves on that. Pace University is talking about their Land Use Leadership Alliance program. We've participated in it. They're inviting us again to participate in the LULA training program. The center will be creating gap analyses. Sessions are scheduled to take place May 29th, June 12th, June 19th at Nori Point Environmental Center. So let's figure out who would like to come, who we think should come to attend this. We've got some time, unlike our last item. May 29th is... Maybe some of our planning board members will be interested. I know, Bill, you did that last year?
Two years ago.
Two years ago. Time flies. Bill O'Neill did it ninety...
Nine years ago.
Ninety-three years ago.
Tiffany was still there then.
She was still there then. I think she was new then, I think, right? Okay, very good. We have a letter that we received a copy of, once again, regarding the lack of polling site at the Bard College. This one is now, we were CC, a law firm, I think, talking about a letter to commissioners. CC to myself, or county legislature, or county executive, Kevin Cahill. I did a little research, not much, because I only had a few minutes, but election district five now is grossly over the legal limit, 950, I think is the limit. They sometimes let you go up to 1,100, and the registered voters in election district five, which is not just part of college, it's, you know, the area surrounding it.
Barretown.
Barretown, 9G, a little bit, a little bit of Kelly Road, I believe, is up over 1,600. And so in the context of having a presidential election with the idea that it's once again at St. John's and Barretown, which is a lovely institution, with the idea that that is sufficient for, you know, what the potential turnout will be there, and you can't even, you can't even form a line inside because the space is so small, and we're talking about November weather and accessibility issues. I guess it's been deemed to be accessible, but boy, I don't know. It's got steps and everything. If you need to access it, you have to go into a separate entrance in the back of a building to access it. So once again, Bard College, like many institutions around the state and the country, is looking for a polling site. I know my daughter's going to Skidmore to have a polling site there. So we, the last time I think we sent out a resolution in support was back in April of 2016, and the numbers back then were actually less than now. I don't know what you'd like to do, but if you would like to send a letter of support to have an additional site located at Bard College, I did prepare a draft for you. I don't know if that works for you, but I know that we all feel very strongly that everybody should have easy access, you know, not just, you know, the folks that teach and go to Bard College or live around there, but also currently our seniors, you know. That's why we're working on, you know, trying to improve transportation so they can get around to do the things that are important to them, that they have the right to do when they vote. So I don't know, what are your thoughts? Do you want to send a letter of support? The deadline, I'm told, for is March 15th, where the election commissioners need to... where the election commissioners need to decide where the polling sites are going to be. And you should know that there's actually a law that's now in its second year, maybe, up in Albany that would require a polling site at all colleges in New York State. It's been passed by the Senate again. The Assembly didn't advance it last year. I think the idea is that, you know, maybe they don't like the additional cost of having additional sites, but I can't imagine there are that many colleges and universities relative to the amount of sites that already exist in New York City or wherever the Assembly pushback is from, but...
Well, I would be in favor of sending a letter. It would be based on the numbers. And as you mentioned, it is hard to have any kind of line. I mean, it has to be outside. So if it is bad weather, then that is very problematic at the current site.
Right, I think I put also in the letter, it's not just the, you know, it's the lighting isn't really good there, it's a county road, you can't really walk. And this is the thing that I think...
And the accessible entrance is, it's tough.
No public transportation?
We have no public transportation, sidewalks, they can't walk there.
Right. And the intent of citing polling sites is that it's supposed to be where the majority of the registered voters are nearby are. And this is obviously not the case. Again, if everybody has to go vote at St. John's, you know, Barretown has, I don't know how many households, but it's a very small population as compared to those who are on the Bard College campus. And I know everybody has particular feelings about students voting, but it's not their fault that they're at a college or a location, you know, for one, two, or four years. We like to encourage people to vote of all ages. And so I think we need to make it accessible.
Yeah, so the question I have is, the recommended number of registered voters is supposed to be so much lower. Should we be breaking this on the two locations or just having a space that accommodates the entire number of people in the district?
Well, I think just telling them to locate a polling site, I mean, the law as it's written, the one that's in place now says it must be a site just for the college or university, which, you know, they crafted the law. This letter of recommendation doesn't say to relocate. It says to locate a polling site on the campus. And they can decide if they want to keep the St. John's one or not, you know. Pretty soon, there are going to be new election districts anyway for the folks at home, just so you know. Between the years of 70, you're not supposed to move polling sites. That's sort of that window right before there's redistricting that goes on based upon the census. And so we'll see how that all works out. And, you know, it's quite likely that we'll end up with eight, maybe even nine, election districts because we have more registered voters of all kinds here in our community. So, yeah. Any thoughts, Bill?
No, I agree with it.
Okay. All right, somebody like to make a motion to vote ahead and approve this recommendation letter to be sent to the election commissioner?
So moved.
Okay.
Second?
Okay. May I go to the second? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Okay. One more piece of correspondence. Oh, we have just some correspondence from our purchasing manager. And I should tell you that our beloved Ted Kudzie came into my office the other day and announced that after, after many, many dedicated years here at the Town of Red Hook, is that he is in fact actually going to retire. And so what he is doing is preparation in advance of that. And so...
Does he have a date?
In conjunction, well, by the end of the month, maybe. Essentially, yeah. Essentially, he wants to get things, you know, everything in order. And so we were looking at our procurement policy, which we, you know, take a look at each year and update and approve, reapprove each year. And there are a couple of minor tweaks here. So I would ask you to just take a closer look at that. And so what we might do is put it on the agenda. If you think it's ready, put it on the agenda for our March 25th meeting. Do you all have any of your correspondence for us?
Could I just note that...
Yeah, do we have a red line copy so we can see what the changes are?
Yeah, yeah, sorry, I didn't, that did not make it into your packet, but we do have that.
I just want to say, it should be said, especially for board members that haven't been around for so long. I mean, Ted has been such a treasure in terms of a procurement officer for the town. You are so lucky to have his expertise because he came to the town with a significant amount of expertise in purchasing.
Yeah.
Takes it very seriously. And he's just been tremendous in terms of managing this process. And I, of course, work with him a lot because of working on contracts for the town. So it's just, you know, it's just been a real benefit to the town.
Yeah, very true.
Yep.
Okay. So, oh, the last thing is we had some communication from the Public Service Commission letting us know that there are informational forums of public statement hearings that are being scheduled on the Champlain Hudson Tower Express Certificate of Environmental Capability. And that is for a high voltage, direct current circuit from the Canadian border down to New York City. And so public comment is being sought. The next date to give comment on this is Monday, March 23rd. It's not very close by, I should tell you, but it's at the First Reform Church of Scotia at 224 North Alston Avenue, Scotia, New York, 12302, when there's a public comment hearing that is closer to our area. We will, of course, notify you of that so you can make a bill.
How close is it coming to our area?
There's a map of it. You know, we should put that on the website so folks can take a look. It's not right by us, but not too far by us either. Okay. That's all I have. Any other correspondence or items before we take any other additional public comment? Linda?
Since Ted is retiring, I suggest that you make a formal presentation of one of those donations.
We got it covered.
Okay.
We got it covered.
And maybe we could get together and have some retirement party for him?
We got it covered.
That's good, okay.
Thank you, Linda. All right. Any other public comments? If not, I thank you all for joining us. Again, I would remind you, and we'll be sending out a mailer to all households, to please take advantage of our functionality of our new website, redhook.org, and notify me. We can keep you up to date on all the rapidly changing things in our community. Okay, good night and thank you very much. At this time, I'd like to make a motion to close the meeting. All in favor?
Second?
Second.